Go to the textbook, okay? It really does help for this test. So, the first thing we got into in this one, just to review, is metallic bonding. And you notice in this unit, we're talking about it again. The college board method of teaching AP is really good because we keep coming back to topics again and again and again, and talking about different aspects of it, but it also helps you guys review. So, it takes longer to get through the content, but there's less reviewing needed at the end, because we always come back to this over and over again, okay? So, metallic bonding. Remember the key word, and this is the British spelling of delocalized. They use an S instead of a Z. So, this was obviously from a British source. Delocalized electrons means what?
That they are mobile, uh, they can move.
Yeah, they can move, okay? So, I'm localized as a person. I live here in Madeira, and I don't stray very far from here usually if I can help it, okay? We do have, we have a lot of migrant students who do move up and down the state. Why are they moving up and down the state? Harvest changes from place to place. So, the other side of my family grows bell peppers and onions. They start down in the desert, and as the season moves, the harvest moves north, further and further north up through California, and because of the nature of the weather and everything for that. So, the people harvesting that stuff are also moving, and they're taking their families with them. So, they're not localized. They are delocalized, okay? And that's just the nature of the job, okay? So, the metallic bonding, remember, metals are in a sea of loosely held mobile electrons, as you guys said. And those ions are free to move, and the bonds are in every direction. They're omnidirectional. What kind of properties does this give metals then? Because of this, what kind of properties do metals have? Malleable? Shiny, good? I'm thinking of them too, what you guys are thinking. They can be melt, yeah, the melting points of metals varies. They're relatively high melting points, to be honest, but they can conduct electricity pretty easily, you know? They conduct heat very easily, but they might not melt. It really depends on the metal or all over the place, because mercury is a liquid at room temperature. It's already melted. But they do conduct heat and electricity very easily. So, metals are ductile, malleable, good conductors, and shiny, and it's all because of the delocalized electrons, okay? So, if I hit a metal at the atomic level, you gotta think like a hammer has atoms in it which have electrons in them. So, if a hammer comes at this metal, this is not drawn to scale. Constant, sure. So, that's the hammer. The atoms on the hammer have electrons surrounding them. When they get close to the electrons in the metal, what do electrons do when they get near each other? Repel, okay? If those repel, these guys take off, and they take the nuclei with them, and it'll flatten out wherever you hit it, okay? With an ionic, if you hit it with a hammer, it doesn't, it's not malleable. It separates, and then they repel, okay? So, there's a little bit of a difference in how those things are set up, but those loose electrons really let it have those properties, okay? Including the shininess. For the shininess portion, if a beam of photons, light, hits one of these electrons, it takes it, it jumps up a few levels, falls back down, and then shoots out light. You guys see that as shiny, okay? If those electrons weren't loose, you wouldn't see that. It'd be whatever color the metal is. If it was just a grayish, probably would look different. In your everyday lives, isn't it important to know this stuff? No. For tomorrow on the AP test, you have this. Get past that idea of, what am I gonna use this? Never. Unless you major in chem, biochem, medical field, engineering. What do you wanna do, Lisa? Well, you should be a rock. We should call you Peter. Peter means rock. Peter, Petra means rock, yeah? If you're wondering why it's important to you, just imagine why it's important to me. I, yeah, so I guess, yeah, okay, you're right. Okay. So, you will see some questions on all of this, but you're really gonna see some particle-level drawings on the test, where I'm gonna ask you which one is an interstitial alloy or which one is a substitutional alloy, okay? So, just to review this, remember, interstitial alloys have smaller atoms in the spaces between the bigger atoms, okay? So, in an interstitial alloy, it's gonna look like this. This would be a representation of something like steel, where you have carbon, I'm sorry, iron, iron. But the little guys in there represent which element in steel? Carbon, yeah. So, it's called carbon steel for a reason. There's carbon in it, okay? Iron by itself is too soft. Iron with some carbon in it causes there to be some bonding, ionic bonding in those spots. And remember, that gives it more rigidity, more stiffness, okay? So, it's not a, so make it a bridge out of pure iron would be really stupid, because it would start to sag under the weight of the bridge. Making it out of a certain type of steel, depending on the size of the bridge and what they need, they'll mix in certain amounts of carbon when they're melting it or smelting it. So, in the smelting process, there are whole fields of chemistry devoted to making new types of steel and coming up with different recipes for it. Substitutional alloys are a little bit different. Those are where you have atoms of similar size mixed together. So, with brass, which you guys, you guys dissolved down the brass, but brass is made up of copper and what else? Zinc, yeah. So, those two are right next to each other on the periodic table, so they are similar in size. So, substitutional alloys will always have elements of similar size mixed. How do they get them to mix? Melt both of them? Mix them together, let them cool, okay? So, they're definitely mixtures. It's iron plus carbon in this one, and it's copper plus zinc in that one. They are not chemically reactive. The only thing with the steel is you do get some bonding in there, and that's, again, the rigidity, okay? No matter which type it is, they get decreased metal properties. Even with this one, with a substitutional, they're not as soft as most metals. Like, my ring is gold and copper because of the difference in the atoms, okay? So, just think, if it's an alloy, the metal properties are decreased. So, it's less conductive, less of a conductor of heat and electricity, not as soft, it's more rigid, not as malleable, basically, and not as ductile, okay? Pure copper makes really good wire. Steel would not make good wire, okay? Steel makes good brushes, like a steel, a wire brush to clean off metal, like rust off of metal. That's steel usually in the bristles, because it's stiffer, it's more rigid. I don't want to change it, I'm just Are these called again? Oh, chipmunk. It's almond cocoa loco.
Interesting.
Crazy coconut and almond. If we're trying, the other one's pretzels with something else. Wait, Rihanna, which one is your grandma like? I'm gonna say one afterwards and get some. If I wasn't her at Save Mart, and she's trying to get the last money, and I'm getting lost in money? I give it to her. So, how old is your grandma? Don't say forty-eight, okay?
Oh, nice.
That's my grandma. Grandpa Matt. Papa Matt? Mema, wait, Mema is grandma, huh? Does anybody call their grandma Mema? That's like a white thing, I think. No offense. Just call her grandma or grandma. Any mom, yours?
My mom's forty-six.
Just a little bit. Calm down, I'm gonna hold down, okay? Are we good on, are we good on alloys? Okay. Ironic bonding, okay? One thing you absolutely need to know is that an ionic compound has a metal with a nonmetal in it, okay? That's, that has to be known, okay, right? Metals with non-metals for ionic, okay? So, the metal we call the cat ion, remember, that's positive. To remember the cat ions positive, in the cat part, I see a lowercase t, which reminds me of a positive sign. Or if you like cats, they're positive. Okay, I know. Yeah, cat ions are positive. Let me put it on the board for the people. Nice, okay. They're positive, okay? He thinks it's pretty smart with his positives, right? But that, I actually forgot that was from a meme. So, cat ions are positive, okay? Anions are the negatives. Just remember, an and anti mean against. It's a negative meaning connotation. So, remember that ionic compounds form a crystal lattice structure. So, you can kinda, you can see this one up here. And it's a repeating pattern of positives and negatives, okay? So, cat ion, anion, cat ion, anion. The, they don't hang out in molecules, okay? They do not hang out in molecules. They bring this up again in the Unit Three videos as well. So, actually, 3.1 and 3.2 are kinda rehashes of the Unit Two videos as well. So, if you watch those even, it's good for this test, so. I do like that about the way the class is structured now, because it really, you just keep hearing the same things over and over again, okay? One of the things you constantly hear about is that, what is that? Coulomb's law. Coulomb's law, yeah. So, Coulomb's law, remember, the k is a constant. We're not doing the numbers with this. It's just, it's just the conceptual stuff on this, okay? So, the q's are charge, okay? The r is the radius or the distance between the nuclei, okay? Half the distance between the nuclei. So, for that, for all of these ionic compounds, you have a positive and a negative charge in the compound. If the distance between those two nuclei is small, then the force of attraction is what? Big. If that gets really small, that gets really big. If the charges here get really big, that gets really big, okay? So, whenever you look, like, if you look at sodium fluoride versus calcium fluoride, if I just, just to show you how this would work, for sodium, what's the charge on sodium and sodium fluoride? Positive how much? It should be a real quick one. What's the charge on fluoride? Minus one, okay? So, the q's on that would be plus one, minus one, and then whatever the r is, okay, for that. Again, we're not doing the math on this. I'm just showing you how the charges kinda work out for this. Now, if I looked at calcium fluoride, again, fluoride's what charge? Negative, always negative one, each, each. And that would be positive two. So, the way we look at this in Coulomb's law is we only look at one of those with that, not both of them, okay? So, just looking at the charges, which would be more ionic? Or which would have the stronger force of attraction between the ions? Let me ask you that. If that's the same as that, then which would be the more? Yeah, it's gonna be that, because it has a higher charge for the calcium, okay? So, we'll, and again, we talk about this again in this unit. So, it's really, actually doing, starting the unit like we did before taking the test will actually help if you have to do a retake, because you're getting more of this in this unit, so. It's, yeah, it's like you have no choice but to do better. But you have a choice, but just refuse to do the retake. So, between ions and ionic compounds, the electronegativity difference is big, okay? If that different, and you don't have to know the difference numbers, okay? I know in the notes, it shows, you know, if it's polar covalent, the electronegativity difference is such and such to such and such, ionic is this to this. You don't have to know those, okay, for the test. It's in the notes, but I'm only, I was only giving you numbers so you could tell just by looking at where they're at on the table, okay, for that. Another big idea that you'll see on the test is conductivity with ionics. And they bring it up in the college board videos for Unit Two and the first two parts of Unit Three. But they talk about the conductivity of ionics. They will not conduct electricity in their solid phase, okay? Because they're locked into that crystal structure, and the electrons are not free to move enough to conduct. The only way to get it to conduct is to get it melted or dissolve in water. The minute you dissolve an ionic compound in water, as we saw today, water will pull each of those ions out, which frees up the electrons in the solution to move. And so, if I put a conductivity tester in it, it'll light it up, okay? So, you can transfer charge through salt water, but not solid salt, okay? Getting a salt to melt is tough, as you saw in here. Sometimes I can get it to happen, sometimes not. But if I could get the salt melted, and I put a conductivity tester in there, it would light up too, okay? If it doesn't melt, the leads that I stick in there. Good? So, that's huge. Covalent compounds, like sugar, will never conduct electricity. So, if I take sugar solid, it doesn't conduct. If I dissolve it in water, it doesn't conduct, okay? Sugar will not conduct electricity. It's polar, but it's not ionic, so it's not a good conductor, okay? In that, so ionics will conduct. They're one of the few. Metals will conduct, obviously. So, one of the labs coming up, next lab coming up, is what's in that bottle? So, by the time we get done with Unit Three, that lab will come about towards the end of it. You're gonna get four to six bottles of unknown substances, and your group will have to come up with a series of tests to figure out which one is which, okay? So, you're gonna get an ionic solid. You're gonna get one that looks just like it that's covalent. One of the tests you can do is conductivity. Dissolve them in water and see if they conduct. If they conduct, it's probably the ionic one if it does. You can also heat them up, because if you heat up the ionic one, it's probably not gonna melt. But if you heat up sugar, if it's, that's covalent, it melts real easily, okay? And that goes to the IMF too, so. That's why we wait on that lab until Unit Three, because then you'll have enough. The bonding we talked about in this unit and the IMF in Unit Three, and between the two of those, you can come up with some pretty interesting tests with that, okay? And I'll give you, I'm not gonna like leave you guys to just go come up with, you know, different tests to figure this out. We'll lead you through it, okay? The other thing, and this is on the test for sure, is the brittle aspect of ionic solids, okay? And we talk about this in class, so I'm gonna draw it up here. And the guy from Florida in the AP videos brings this up. But if I take and hit this, if I hit it in this spot right here, what does this section do if I hit this with a hammer? Yeah, it drops down. So, if that's there, and that's there, and this section drops down, this would be there. That would end up there after hitting it with a force. And what do those guys do? They repel. So, you're gonna see like four different particle diagrams, and they're gonna ask, you know, which one represents the brittleness of an ionic compound? Yeah, so you're looking for this, because it shows that when you hit that down and those charges line up, they repel, and it breaks, it breaks real cleanly, by the way, when it, when you, if you have a big hunk of salt and you hit it with a hammer. I mean, it just comes off. It's like smooth as glass on that side. It just like pops right off, okay? So, it's a lot different than metals. If you hit a metal like that, it just all, you know, kinda sacks down. So, there's a lot to it, but it's really, if you can interpret the particle diagrams on there, it's really not that bad. But the brittleness is really shown by this. If you hit a metal, if that question asks about a metal, then you would see something more like, like if I hit this same thing, but it was a metal, you'd have kinda this, where we just kinda lump into this flat wherever you hit it, okay? And it kinda moves around, because the electrons are loose. The electrons aren't loose in this, so it's gonna separate when you do it, okay? We good on that? I'll take my truck and get me some more flips. I've only tried the cocoa loco, I haven't tried the other ones. I like coconut. Remember this? I hate this part, okay? Oh, no? Now, I am getting paid for this session, okay, yeah, so. I think I could, I think I could put a, I think CosGrave said I could, but I don't know, whatever. If they pay me, then I'm gonna feel bad if you don't do well. So, I'd rather not feel bad and not have the money, yeah, so, okay? No. Oh, shoot, it's on there. I'll delete that, okay? So, alright. I teach for the money, alright? I'm gonna really have to edit this video before I let it go, okay? Alright. Do you wanna try this first, or you want me to go over it? How many wanna try it first? Alright, try it, and then I'll go over it, okay? Let me use, I gave you the overall equation, and I'll give you one hint. The overall equation's energy is this, okay? Everything equals that. There's absolutely one of these on the test, okay? No, what are you, wait, what are you memorizing? I give you the table. The only one you need to know is what that means, because everything is always equal to the entropia formation. That's this. No, you get, I give you the equation. Yeah, yeah, no, 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 you're, don't overthink this, yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, when I say the equation, I mean the calcium plus fluorine plus... No, I don't give me like the equation equation to figure, but I'm telling you right now how to do it. All of those steps equal this. All the steps equal this. No, you don't need it if you listen right now. All of the steps up there beside, this is the total. All of these steps plus the lattice energy, which is not given, equal this. It's algebra, that's all it is. You're given this and everything else except the lattice energy. We're assuming when you guys get to this class, you can do algebra. From that. I wanna get that by itself. How do I get that out of there? I feel like you either, you guys either can't do algebra or you're overcomplicating it. Which one is it? Okay, that's a better answer. Yeah. What's that? That's what I wanna see what you guys think out here, because that's a good question, yeah. I'm gonna, this one's a little diff, I was gonna give you all of this. How do I get B by itself? How do I get that out of there? You got that, if we have that, that's good, okay, alright, alright. I'm just making sure, okay? No, because calcium does an ionization energy. Because it's a plus-two charge. You gotta be able to think this through. Mike, you had another charge for the, for the ions. That you should know already. If, if it's two, if it's a plus-two charge, then it's gonna lose the first electron and the second. But there was one I gave you guys where it was lithium, and it had three ionization energies. Lithium's only a plus-one, you only need the first one. That's the kinda thinking you have to do on these, and that's what it's, yeah.
It's not that scary, because it's giving you that, and it's giving you the addition.
It literally gives you everything except the lattice energy. Let me, I'll explain where the hard part is when we go over this one, okay? And that's the electron affinity of F. They gave you for one F, but in the equation, there's two. That one will be in this case. You gotta take it by a case-by-case basis, on a case-by-case basis, yeah? You do. Calcium's a plus-two ion, so it has, it loses two to get there, yeah, good, yeah, alright? You'd have three ionization energies, yeah? And I, and I'd have to give you all three. Like aluminum is the only one we're really talking about there, because that's the most common of those metals in that family would be aluminum. I'm not gonna give you gallium or anything. I think the one you get on the test is one you've done before, to be honest. I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about, let me just, let me get those, wanna like try to... Don't, you're doing great, don't worry. You're doing great. That's why I told him he was driving, but I didn't say if he wanted it, but he didn't stop. Have you been driving too? Do you ever permit? Oh, he has to wait till for a permit. Was that us? You saw me and Thomas in the car?
And the door was open, like the driver's door, and it was like touching the street.
Were you with, were you with your grandmother?
I was with my mom and my grandma, it was just me.
With your grandma eating a flip? While you're driving? Alright, you wanna, you guys, you're gonna wait? Alright, you wanna, you guys, you wanna wait? Can I do it real quick, because I forgot to do it? Get it wrong? I'm so confident that I'm gonna use the pencil that has no eraser. I thought about the, uh, what we were talking about arguing with the college professors, and you guys were saying it was mean, and, and I, one of them, I did feel bad, and I probably should've told you that, but uh, Mr. Pol, Mr. Polley. No, I corrected him in front of the group, and he was really good about it. But the way I did it, I went to him afterwards, and I said, hey, I, I should've done it in private. And he was an ex-Vietnam vet fighter pilot, and he goes, I didn't care. He goes, you're right. Okay, so I don't know how to do this, but I'll go there. I got it.
Okay, everything else minus the lattice. Oh, wait, wait, oh, you're right. You're right.
I like that you guys trust our man.
Okay, wait, I think I got it. I don't think I'm good, but okay. Let's just check my, no, you're already good on it.
I had a syntax error.
Oh, wait, Orion, I know what you did. You didn't, you didn't multiply the.
Multiplied.
You didn't double.
Oh, I did.
You didn't double. You didn't, a double, yeah, like two.
Well, that's if I can finish.
Two what?
Oh, two S. You can say the last one, but then you.
Yeah, I was just, you're supposed to.
I got an answer, uh, I'm not saying it's right, I'm just saying I got one. What'd you get? What if I, here, what if I do this? Yeah, it's after hours. What'd you get? No, that's not the answer.
Oh, wait.
No, it's under my finger.
Okay, okay.
What is it?
Pretty confident if she got it right, I'm pretty confident. I was real nervous until I started calculating, I'm like, okay, I think I did it right. Okay, so. Sablin, yeah. Alright, um. I heard that. Okay, so, um. Please, this is not AP. This is doable, okay, so. The person that got the highest score on the last test is saying she should've dropped, so the problem is in the belief that you can do it. Now, I know the districts, this, we believe culture crap, that they don't really mean it. Yeah, you gotta believe it. What's that? Uh, L. Yeah. I've told him myself. I'm not cutting anything. Alright, so. It doesn't mean anything until you guys believe it. Everybody in the whole world could believe it, but if you don't, that I would tell them right to their face. Yeah, okay. Prove it tomorrow. Okay, so. 179, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave out the kilojoules per mole and all that stuff, but 179, we have, uh, 158. Now, why don't I double or halve this? Yeah, if that matches what's here, don't do anything to it, okay? Okay. It's, guys, it's been a couple of weeks since we did this, so I get it, if you haven't, that's why I want you guys in your notes every night, kinda looking at stuff, but. Uh, calcium, you're gonna use both of those because it's a plus two. So that's 590, which is the same as my... You can go weight, weight or age on that one, you're gonna be. Okay, and then it's plus a minus. Now, this is where it's a little tricky. It says one F there, but it's two in the equation, so what do we have to do to this? Double it, yeah, which is, I think, negative 696. Okay. So all of that, the sum of all of that would get subtracted from this, which is negative... What is that, negative? I gotta look.
Oh, wait, yeah, I know.
It, the reason it's negative, it's positive here, but we're subtracting it. So this comes out to 1381. So it's UL plus 1381, I gotta subtract that on both sides. And then that's gonna give me lattice energy is gonna be negative, or sorry, it's gonna be, yeah, negative 2,601 kilojoules per mole. Lattice energy is always, 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 always negative.
Okay.
Okay. Always. Okay, so what is the definition of lattice energy? Oh, I might need to know that from. Oh, okay, it's fine. Oh, sorry, sorry. I thought you said I was... Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. Eric. Because calcium's a plus two ion. It's losing two electrons. It needs two ionization energies, yeah. If the charge is plus three, it needs three ionization energies, yes. Okay, uh, I heard the correct definition from Rihanna in the back, uh, gaseous ions becoming an ionic solid. It's the last step. Okay, it's the last step in an ionic compound forming, and it releases a lot of energy for those guys to get together. Okay? Because it releases so much energy, if I try to melt it once it's together, it's hard. It's gotta really, it's gonna, it's gonna get really hot before I can get it to melt, because it's so stable. The melting point is real high on those. Okay? Salt, 801 degrees Celsius to get salt NaCl to melt, because... Uh, I don't know, I can't do the math in my head. Take that number times, uh, 1.8 and add 32 to it.
What number is this?
Uh, what did I say, 801? Times 1.8 plus 32? It's 1,474 Fahrenheit.
That's hot.
So is my wife. Alright, it's after hours. Okay.
Aren't you broadcasting?
Yes. No. I forgot to, I forgot to hit go live, yeah. Okay, so remember, whatever, you wanna make sure the number matches up with the equation that's given to you. Okay? If it's halved, you gotta take that into account too. Okay, yeah, so. Look at the examples in the notes I gave you, I gave you two in the notes, I gave you this one, um, just really make sure you have that down. I'll be embedded by eight tonight, so. Okay, covalent bonding, non-metals are bound by sharing electrons. Yes. Oh, sorry, yes. Yeah. What do you, well, what part? I'm, I'm, I'm adding all that together and then subtracting it to get it over to the other side. It's because it's gonna get subtracted out there, yeah, it's. Yeah. It's, yeah, that's really, that was really meant to show that you're subtracting at the end to get it up, you really just need that by itself, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's a good que, it's a good question, I mean, it's just, it's, don't be afraid to ask now, I mean, now's the time to ask, because when you guys get here tomorrow, I'm not answering jack squat, it's, yeah, you're gonna come in and start that test right now. Don't look over. I have a class switch period. I won't be answering the door in the morning.
What if you're walk, like about to walk in?
I will take the back entrance, the servants entrance to.
What if we ask you when you're over there?
Try it, shoot out. Okay, so. We get here by 7:15, get in.
I'll be there at 7:00.
Alright, uh, guys, covalent bonding, so, um, ionic is metal with non-metal, covalent is non-metal with non-metal. Okay? Remember that polar covalent means they're not sharing the electrons equally, and non-polar means they are sharing equally. Okay? This will also help with unit three. And I was getting a lot of good questions at lunch, Marty came in and asked some really good questions, and she's, or even just trying to make sure she was right. Okay? Um, for ionic compounds, you know, they hang out in crystal lattice structures, but for covalent, most of them, their smallest unit is the molecule, usually. For this test, it is the molecule. For unit three, we'll look at network solids. Do you guys like silicon? How about diamond? Covalent. Not molecules, it's a crystal lattice structure, yeah. Don't ignore that right now, it doesn't matter for this test. Uh, covalent bonds, remember, are stronger than intermolecular forces. Intermolecular forces are about 1% the strength of a covalent bond. Damn. This is why when you boil water, you're not breaking covalent bonds, you're breaking intermolecular forces. So in water like this, if I get it to boil, these break, and the molecules fly off as a gas. Okay? If the covalent bonds were broken, we'd end up with hydrogen gas and oxygen gas when we boil water, and that would be very dangerous, because hydrogen gas near a flame top stove, mixed with oxygen gas near a flame top stove would be explosion. Okay? So we need this to be the case, okay, for water. Yes.
It's not really a question about this, but is it possible to try to, uh, mix all the elements?
Like all 100 natural elements? Well, a lot of them would probably react with each other, plus the radioactivity, plus that'd be a whole mess.
What if we like, what if we do it, if we do it in the universe, if we do it somewhere in the universe?
What if you would remain safe?
I don't even know, this, the question's kinda, not to be rude, but nonsensical, um, so.
I had to ask.
Sorry, okay, so. Let's move on, um. Bond order, what the fudge is bond order? I should beep that part where I just said what the fudge, so it's not like I said. What the fluorine? That should be our shirt for the AP test. What the fluorine?
Yeah, hold my.
Alright, uh, guys, H2O2N2. Mary one, k, no, I'm just kidding, uh, so. That's on the video, okay? It's after hours. Should've done this on my private YouTube channel, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. What is bond order for starters?
Yes. I, I kinda know what it is, but I don't kinda explain it.
Of the bonds. Please do that on the AP test, if you know you're gonna get a one anyway, just answer stuff like that, you know, okay.
No, a single bond, a double bond, a triple bond.
So, bond order of one. Good, let's just put BO for bond order. Alright. And then, bond order of two, double A.
Isn't it, uh?
Double A.
And a bond order of three would be?
Triple.
Triple A, okay. So, out of those three, what are you gonna have to do with those to figure out which one's got which bond order?
Figure out how many bonds.
Draw them. Alright. That's why we do this, uh, yeah, okay. Did you high five yourself? Nice. The COVID high five, where you have to, you can't high five anybody else, you just have to, you know. No, now you can. She might not want to. Just put covalents off for every answer, you'll be fine, so. Which would have the highest bond order to her? It would be three, but which, which molecule? What happened? Don't say anything? Okay. Let's, uh, you wanna draw them first? How do I draw hydrogen? Do I put dots around the hydrogen? Okay, good, good, that's good. Okay. What about O2? How many bonds does oxygen usually make? Two. And then we have, they each have eight electrons, because they can't break the octet rule, because they're in the second period, this isn't the first. Okay, N2. How many bonds there are? Okay, okay, guys, listen on this real quick, okay? For, so the people that are asking, can you hear this? On the periodic table, how many bonds do the noble gases normally make? Zip, yeah. What about group 7A, the halogens? One, oxygens. Nitrogen family, three. Carbon, four. It's a pattern. Let me ask you this, how many ele- as I choke on my own soul, um, how many electrons does fluorine have? Valence. Seven, okay, so let's look at fluorine. It's got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, another fluorine comes in. It has seven. How many bonds did that fluorine make?
One.
One. Okay, which can also be written like that, okay? Nitrogen comes with how many valence electrons?
Five.
Five. And the other one comes with... The only way you can get eight around them is to draw it like that. Because if you try to do it, let's say you tried to do it with a single bond. Well, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Why doesn't that work? They don't have eight. Nitrogen can't go below the octet rule, and it can't go above it, it has to have eight. Okay? Also, count the electrons it needs. N2 comes with, each one comes with five, so it should be 10. 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, but it's breaking the octet rule. 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, everybody's got eight, because they're sharing six, okay? So that's just, that's just doing the Lewis structures on those, but then we ask this question, which has the highest bond order? See it? Nitrogen, okay, N2. It has three, okay? Uh, which has, uh, the highest bond energy? Nitrogen, and two, because triple bonds are harder to break than single bonds, okay? Bond energy is the energy required to break the bonds, okay? So the answer to first one and the second one are both N2, and which has the shortest bond length? Nitrogen, because triple bonds are the shortest bond.
Yeah.
Okay? So the answer to all of the first three is N2. Okay, good, you guys are doing great on this, that's great. That didn't sound sincere, that's great, yeah. Fantastic. That's all first year chem stuff, okay, I'm just kidding. The bond orders not, that was something you just didn't learn last year. You don't already know this? Triple bonds are shorter than double, and double bonds are shorter than single. It ju, it just, uh, again, there's not a really good way to say this, other than it just is. Yeah, it's really how it is, yeah.
And how do we, like, let's just say two different things have triple bonds, how do we determine which one?
You'd have to be given more information, like, the, they give you the bond energy, like a C to C triple bond versus an N to N. I can't tell just by, I mean, well, nitrogen's got more electronegativity, so technically it'd be a shorter than carbon, but they're not gonna, it's not gonna get that deep on the test. I just want you guys to be able to at least answer this stuff, okay. Um, now, the fourth question says, consider, uh, C2H2 and C2H4, that's ethine and ethene. And it says, in which molecule is the bond strength higher, and explain, so again, when you're getting questions like this, the good habit to get into is drawing the structure. So what would C2H2 look like? So H makes how many bonds always? One. So to get carbon to get its four bonds, it's gotta have triple, and then C2H4, what would that look like? Now you've got four hydrogens. Yeah, as you add two hydrogens, the bond count in the middle goes down to two, so the question's asking, in which molecule is the bond strength higher? What's stronger, a triple or a double? Triple. So it'd be, yeah, it'd be C2H2. Um, ethine is also known as acetylene, I mentioned that before, but that's uh, like cutting torch gas, for cutting metals, okay, yeah.
Is Momma about to study second?
Oh, shoot. Can you tell? Can you tell, we're having a study session. Sorry. Should I apologize, or just assert my dominance?
Yes, like the bow.
Like I would ever, well, I haven't talked about it here, okay, Tom, just look at me. Don't break the way we're going. Okay, so, uh, bond strength is higher in acetylene, bond length is shorter in C2H2. Okay, and bond order is higher, three bonds, okay. What's that? Yeah, it's really what we just said with, with these guys. So if you're looking, guys, listen on this, so that they can hear it in the, in the back there too. That's got a triple bond, which is shorter, a triple bond or a double? True, so that's got a shorter bond length, which is stronger? Triple, just think, triple bond, it's like, it's held together by three bonds, it's really held together tightly, okay. Uh, and then, which would have the higher bond order? The top one or the bottom one? It's, cause it has more bonds, bond order is how many bonds, yeah. So really know what bond order, bond energy, and bond length mean. Okay, for a test, yeah. It's the energy it takes to break it apart.
So, so that's why it's three?
Yeah. It's real, it's one of the things we looked at in the last problem with the lattice energy thing. Let me, uh, just real, I'm gonna go back to that real quick, just to show you guys. The bond dissociation energy is really the energy it takes to break F2 apart, which is in kilojoules per mole, yeah. So, um, yeah, we're kinda, we're kinda just taking that idea and focusing on it, like, F2 is a single bonded molecule. So if I had N2 there instead, that number should be higher, yeah. It should be a higher number, okay. There's a, there's a lot to tie together in all of this, and it's a lot, I mean, it's, it could be a daunting task, don't get it wrong, okay. It's easier for me, cause again, eighteen years of talking about this stuff, kinda, yeah. Still miss things, though, okay. No, no, but wait, let's take this now and look at it graphically. Don't think of it as bad, think of it as, hey, I'm a visual learner, maybe this will help me more. Okay, so, yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna take you through this one, okay? This was in, uh, this is also in the notes, this diagram, okay? Let me show you, uh. Let me go, let me just show you. Mine is like, you know, all out nuclear war, that's crazy.
Yeah, no, you know, there's still a way to put grass and then play war, I don't feel much.
Let me show. Why is it so slow? It's after hours. It was, and it still is, yeah, um. I'm really struggling, that's true, uh, okay.
Oh wait, it's in color now.
Okay, so, guys, this was in, this is out of the notes, okay? Okay. Now, uh, I gave you two different looks at this thing, and they're labeled, so you can kinda see, but I would really look at this tonight, to make sure you have it down, okay? Well, they're in the, it's in literally in the text. You really should, if you, wow.
My computer, my computer hurts my eyes, I left my hand already. I'm sorry.
I don't, it's funny, okay.
Don't cry, buddy.
I wish I could, yeah.
At least I can cry, you can't.
Even if I. I'm trying, but I just, I can't squeeze it up, okay.
You can't what?
Squeeze out a tear.
Oh, I can do it. But I'm not going to. Okay.
No! If you cry, I'm gonna.
I got you.
Maybe I'll cry when I, when we take the, the AP test, I'll probably start crying. It's all a July, yeah. No, that just makes me angry, so, uh, or happy, depending on how you, yeah. No, no, I don't, I just. I'm not disappointed, I'm just pissed, okay. Can I, can I go to the problem and show you guys what you're gonna see on a test-like question? But I just wanna show you, it's in the notes, okay? Thank you. Call her Joyce, okay. So, uh, the graph itself is very common on the AP test, you're gonna see one tomorrow. Um, the graph, remember, we've got, in this case, it's saying, uh, it's a graph of potential energy versus internuclear distance, now, what they mean by that is distance between the nuclei. So if we have two nitrogens, if they're far apart, they have a lot of potential energy. But as they get close together, at just the right distance, the potential energy drops to the lowest possible. Nitrogen is triple bound, which means it gets to really low potential energy, cause triple bonds are very stable. So just think, more stability, lower potential energy, okay? Lower potential energy. That's fine, here, I'll put it up here. I'll type it here. I'm gonna make this bigger. Okay, so. Sit tight, I'll be fine, okay? So, guys, if potential energies, uh, if, if these guys get infinitely far away, and we mentioned this in the notes, if they, if those two atoms get infinitely far away, they're approaching a, a potential energy of zero, yeah, okay. And, and really what it means is there's no attraction between, if they got infinitely far apart, there'd be zero attraction, but as long as two particles are in this universe, there's attraction. Just like, we can get as far away from the earth as possible in this universe, and there's still a little tiny bit of gravitational pull from this planet to whatever ship, okay? When, when people go weightless in outer space, like, when they're orbiting the earth, it's really not so much because they're far away from the earth, it's not the gravitational problem, it's really that they're falling around the earth. And they just are attracted to it, they keep falling, fall around the sphere, which makes you feel weightless, okay? So, if they get infinitely far apart, they would, they would approach zero, okay, in that case, they're not attracted infinitely far apart, okay? So, if we had to place an X where the bond length would be represented on this thing, it's gonna be down here. Because that is the length between the atoms that is the most stable for that particular molecule, okay? Now, we're only talking diatomics in this. So hydrogen, oxygen, fluorine, bromine, hydrogen, off, regular, okay? We, they, they do not get more complicated than that on the AP test, which is good, okay? So, as they're dropping and getting closer together, they drop in energy, that's what's happening as they get to that point. For hydrogen, it's seventy-four picometers, you don't need to know that. For, uh, I don't know what it is for nitrogen. But if you're looking at comparing two different elements on this thing, this one's for nitrogen. What if it said draw it for oxygen, would it be the same? No, it's never, it wouldn't do that, it's the AP test, okay, so it's not gonna be the same as nitrogen. That line represents nitrogen. What's true about the bonds, we just drew these on the board, nitrogen has what kind of bond? Triple, and oxygens. Which is longer? Oxygen. If this is the bond length from here to here, what would be true of oxygen? It'd be more that way. Which bond has lower potential energy, a triple or a double, which is more stable? Triple, so the oxygen line is gonna be further that way, and up a tiny bit. Okay, let me draw it and show you what I mean. Triple's gonna go lower and to the left. Yeah. Okay. So, the oxygen would look something more
Yeah.
like that. Okay, in that case. What if it was hydrogen?
Then it'd be way over there, and even higher.
Yeah, be further left and even higher, yeah. So you'd have, hydrogen would look something like that. Okay. Let me tell the code. Okay, so, the, the real, the, this is a, like, I pulled this idea from one of the AP release questions, and it was a multiple choice, and you, they had them labeled as like ABC, and you had to figure out which one was hydrogen, which one was nitrogen, and which one was oxygen. Okay, so let me, let me just say this again for you guys, you can, you can hear it, okay? Going from nitrogen, nitrogen's triple bound, it's more stable, which means that, that graph is gonna go lower. Okay, and the bonds are shorter, cause it's a triple, so it's gonna be further to the left, this distance from there to there is the ideal distance for those two atoms to be apart from the bond length, okay? So for oxygen, they're further apart, so the bond length starts here and goes to there, should be, cause it's a double, and it's higher energy, cause it's not as stable. Okay. So there's a lot, there's a lot to that, and if that's still, you know, you could go back and watch this tonight if you need to. Fast forward through all the crap, and then, uh, all the stuff I'm gonna beep when I edit it, and, um, constant beeps, just gonna throw beeps in to make it sound like I passed the whole night, yeah.
Do it.
You beep? Beeper. The beep has an errand. You'd be doing me a favor, alright, so.
Yay!
Last slide, but most stuff, okay, so. Alright, fo, okay, focus on one of them, let's focus on the H3 first, okay? You gotta be able to answer all that, yeah. I, I gotta look at the test again, but all, if you can do this, you can answer anything on that test. We're gonna, we're gonna, okay?
I know the electron geometry.
Hang on, hang on, just, just try it first.
I am trying, yeah.
Try it in your head, not out loud while you're trying it, yeah.
I didn't say it all out.
Okay. Is that going to? Shocked. She gave me a thumbs up, guys, I'm okay.
Yeah! You're not sleeping on the couch tonight.
I really can't now, cause it has a big metal, yeah, like a, in a console. No, I'm, I have Alka-Seltzer. Did you eat that sandwich? It'll be in your blood, okay. No, give me my, it's my sign, it's okay, alright, so. Do you have a word? Is she giving you the answers, okay? Is it okay if I draw it, or you're gonna wait? Why can I do that with boron? It can break the octet rule by going under eight with six, okay? So remember boron, just in case, okay? Boron goes under, it's the one you have to know that goes under, yeah. Bromine is usually a branch atom, cause it's, it's, it only makes one bond. Yeah. Just know, if you know boron for tomorrow, you'll be fine, okay? What are the bond angles in this? One twenty. Okay. What is the electron geometry? Trigplanar, uh. So, remember, with electron geometry, you're just looking at the branches, not what's attached. So three branches like that with no lone pair? Trigonal planar, okay? The molecular geometry is what? Trigonal planar on this one. Yes, yes. No, I'm not, I'm not grading your spelling. That would be fine with me, and I understand it, yeah. If, you get that one, yeah. Okay, so, the next question is, the hybridization of the central atom, it has three branches. SP2. There's really no way around it, you gotta remember these, okay? How many letters are represented here? One S and two P is how much top, yeah, good, three, three branches. Okay, it matches the branch, okay? It's, it's the easiest way to remember what it is. I don't care, as long as you're getting something, I don't want, I don't want you to go away empty-handed. Alright, how many sigma bonds are in this thing? Three, how many pi bonds? Zero, okay? Okay. Sigma bonds, this is the Greek letter, sigma, um, you don't have to know the Greek letter. So, sigma bonds are single bonds. So any, any first bond out, like, if you think of it as throwing a rope to somebody to attach yourself to them, that first rope thrown is sigma. Any additional bond thrown is a pi. So there's no pi bonds because there's no double or triple bonds in this thing, okay? One's a sigma. There's one sigma, one pi. Triple bond, there's one sigma and two pi. Every additional after a single bond is a, is a pi bond. It's a designation they give it, guys, you gotta understand, we're not going into gory details on the sigma and pi bonds like we used to. Think whatever deity you believe in or the universe if you don't, that we don't do that, okay? Double or triple bond, it's just a designation we give to anything that's not a single bond. Okay, now, formal charge. Okay. How many valence electrons does boron have before it gets in there? Three? I was looking at you like I wasn't sure if you're, if you knew you were right or not, okay, okay, good, okay. So it has three, what does it have in here according to the rules of formal charge? Three. Well, how many electrons are surrounding it? Six, it gets half of those according to the rules for formal charge in the notes. So what's three minus three? Zero. Okay. Look up the formal charge stuff in the notes tonight if you're not sure, okay? You gotta half the stuff that they're sharing. Go halvesies. Like going Dutch on a date. You each pay for half.
We call it going Dutch.
That's offensive to everybody except the person. Wait, are we talking about touch oven in, like when you fart? Yeah, not the cooking, okay? Try, uh, try sulfate, this was on. So four, two, one minute? Let's try that, so. Let's try it, it doesn't taste good, but it'll, it'll help with your stomach. It should peel over something. You draw this one, you know, draw this one. Six times twenty-four? Oh, oh, it is twenty-four, yeah. Oh, Francisco, sorry, I didn't know you were in the chat, uh, my bad, good job.
I did it.
Uh, Francisco, sorry about, is he still watching, okay? I didn't see the chat, sorry.
I remember this one.
Yeah, it'll, uh. Look who's in the middle.
What, that was, I was. I erased it because I did this, but now he'll do it.
Okay, so, uh, this is the most correct drawing of sulfate. First of all. What are the bond angles in this thing? One oh nine point, think three dimensionally. How many bran, how many branches are coming off of there? One oh nine point five, yeah, okay? So. Okay, so guys, for this one, the ideal bond angles are one oh nine point five. Okay, degrees. What is the electron geometry? Yeah, that's gonna be tetrahedral. I'm gonna just put T for tetrahedral and that's tetrahedral. If each branch has an atom attached to it, the names are the same. So if it's four atoms on a tetrahedral, they're both named tetrahedral, okay? Yeah, look at that sheet I gave you, if you need another one there. Okay, uh, what is the hybridization if it's four branches? SP3. Okay. Now, the sigma and pi bonds, how many sigmas?
Four sigmas, two pi.
Four sigmas, two pi. Yeah, so the double bond, the first bond in a double bond is always a sigma, any additional would be the pi. Okay?
It's so smart.
I don't know, it's, it's like, it'd be like calling a brick stupid, um, it just is, yeah, no, no, you're a rock, that's different, um. I'm just saying, it's like calling an atom an object stupid, it's, it's just the way it is, I mean, there's no, yeah. You're not hurting his feelings, uh, I'm assuming sulfate's male, yeah, so. Sulfur.
No, you're, what's it called?
Weepy.
Weepy. I, I, I reversed it. I reversed it.
His pants are broken, so. Okay, uh, what is the formal charge on the sulfur? Central, central atom. Zero. Okay, so sulfur, sulfur comes with six valence electrons. In this, it gets half of all of that, which is six. Okay, so there's a double bond here. That gets split, so they get two of those electrons, one of those, two of those and one of those, it adds up to. Six, six minus six. Zero, okay? Try the next one.
Which one?
N2H4, yeah. It says, it tells you to focus on one of the ends.
So make it like, so it's only like. N one, N two.
You gotta make sure that it has the right number of total electron. That they obey the octet rule and hydrogen only has two electrons, yeah, all the usual steps, okay? Huh? Oh, hang on. I'll play that before the test. There are nine multiple choice and only two free response. One of the free responses has one, two, three, four, five. Eight parts. Well, it's taking a bunch of stuff and adding it on one, well, that's part of it, yeah, okay? No, don't cry. Please don't cry. If you see you, do not cry tomorrow, okay? It's five twenty-five now, tomorrow the test will be at, uh, what time, nine thirty-five-ish? So you got more than twelve hours to.
I did it last night.
This may not help you, but I will sleep very well tonight.
So I was checking my final exam all night, it changed.
Thank you for not hoping that I die, so I'm gonna do that.
I signed up for it. I signed up for it and the art department already said your test is.
Well, I hope you guys do really well on this test tomorrow.
That's aggressive, meaning that.
Toxicness. Toxic friendliness. There are people like that, I don't like that, yeah, so. Toxic positivity. Alright, try this one, N2H4, let me draw it too, I need to practice. I did it.
I hear a question on this one, this is a choice.
Because I don't try, I need to help him. So I don't try, I just, I'm just playing around.
And you have a left speed, because we don't need those things to get in.
That's the thing, you know, because I'm going to a community, me too, but I'm still thinking. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I put it out, I can.
How many put a double bond between the ends? Good, okay. No, I just wanna make sure nobody did it.
I'm trying.
What is, uh?
Oh, yeah, it's four, I did not see that.
Guys, how many electrons, valence electrons should be in this thing? Fourteen? So five for that, times two, four of those, okay? Because if you try to do it with a double bond, it ends up being twelve and it's wrong. So we gotta get fourteen electrons in there, so. These guys can only do a single, so that I could get those ready to go. That gives me two, four, six, eight. Now, I need six more, but I can't do this, why? Two, four, six, eight, ten. Nitrogen can't break the octet rule. Yes. 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 So bond there and then a lone pair, you could put the lone pair wherever you want on the nitrogen, but, yeah. Okay, in the interest of time, take your arguments after, do them outside after I've left, okay, alright, so. That would be the correct Lewis diagram, now, what? Maybe before we do the bond angles, what is, what are the branch counts off that, just focus on that. One, two, three. Four, good, Isaac, yeah. Okay, so one, two, three, four, what electron geometry is that? Tetrahedral. Okay. Remember, with electron geometry, those count as a branch. It's gonna be what? Okay, so if you remove. Yeah. No. Close. What is it? Yeah, it's a pyramid. Yeah, if, trigonal, pyramidal or pyramid, pyramid's fine, guys, on the test, okay? It's a pyramid, let me, let me, yeah, think of it this way. Yeah. Yeah, it's a lot like this, guys, this is one that we looked at that was trigonal pyramid.
Yeah, it looks like, yeah.
Ammonia, but instead of that, what we did is we bound it to another nitrogen, okay? Um, this stuff is called, you don't need to know this for a test, but it's, it's hydroxene, it's used in rocket fuel. Okay, so hydroxene is N2H4, it's used in rocket fuel, okay? So. What is the hybridization if this is an electron geometry of tetrahedral? SP3. Okay, so we've got one, two, three, four branches, so. That's SP3, count those lone pairs as branches for hybridization. Okay, for that. How many, uh, pi, or how many sigma bonds in the whole thing? Five, how many pi bonds? Zero, yeah. What's the formal charge on that nitrogen we're focused on? Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Because it comes with five? And here it's got one, two, half of that, three, half of that, four, half of that, five, okay, alright. Oh, angles, uh, whenever it's tetrahedral, the angles are one oh nine point five, for, for purposes of this test, if the, go with the electron geometry for the angles. Okay, I'm not gonna. Yeah, no, I mean, if you know that, if you could do the lab, but that stuff will be relatively. Do you wanna try the other two or what do you wanna do? Alright, try N2Br5. Okay, that's fine, yeah. You know, the nice thing about putting. The window on the transmission to the students at home is it covers my head. So you, you only see my head, which is good. That doesn't affect you guys at all, but. An earthquake drill. Although, the earthquake drill three, if you can make sense. Our next question. It's at ten twenty-one on ten twenty-one. Don't cry.
SP3B.
Now, guys. Real quick, you guys, hybridization, you don't have to know it for this one. It goes beyond SP3, so don't worry about the hybridization for ASBR5. Okay? Because we don't go beyond SP3. Yeah. You might, but you don't have to, yeah, it, it, it's actually been shown to be not so true in molecules. Yeah, so they cut it out AP. That, that benefits us greatly, because it's a lot, yeah. So, we got. Okay, uh, AS is arsenic and it can break the octet rule. Because it's in period, uh, four. Okay, anything in period three and down on the table can break it, okay? Right, so this gets us to, what is the, uh, let's do the, the electron geometry and molecular geometry, they're the same for this one, what is it? No. Trigonal, bi-pyramid. Still trying to spell pyramid, give me a second, okay, okay. So trigonal, if you, if you go to that thing you used for, you maybe used for that. You have two pyramids against the bi-pyramid means this, yeah, that. Yeah, that, okay? So it's really, it's two per, if you do the flat sides on all of this. That's why the, that's why the three dimensional and FET is so much easier to, you know, to figure it out. With this, you kinda just have to know that's, but I can see it, let me show you how I see this, um. I kinda think of it like, like that's the trigonal part, and then the pyramid is kinda, it's hard to visualize without the FET. But if it's got five branches, it's trigonal bipyramidal, okay? And it's got five atoms stuck to it, so that's also trigonal bipyramidal. Pyramid would be something like ammonia. Where you just have one pyramid, this is like two pyramids stuck to each other, okay? It's like the bottoms of two pyramids come together to make a diamond shape, basically, okay? Yeah, well, if you're using it as a noun, it's trigonal bipyramidal. If you're describing it, it's trigonal. Yeah. Do you wanna see to the FET? What's that? Oh, formal charge arsenic comes with five electrons. And it's got five in there, so it's zero, yeah. Alright, let me just show you this real quick, and then I'll have you guys, try CS two if you haven't already, and then we'll be done. If you need to leave, that's fine, I get it, cuz I told you about three. Okay, let's do better.
I know, I, I. But I agree, um, conditioning in.
Okay, so real quick on ASBR five, if it looks something like this. Okay, and where it's one twenty there? That is the, the trigonal part. When I move it this way, you can see the two pyramids, the one on the top here and the one on the bottom there.
Right.
Yeah, so it's ninety and one twenty for the angles, okay? I can't stress really knowing that handout I gave you guys, um, and if you need another one, they're in there, okay? Uh, and again, uh, sigma and pi bonds, they're all sigmas, so it's five sigmas, yeah. Okay, try CS two, and then we'll be done. Uh, for that one, it's gonna be ninety and one twenty, cuz it's trigonal bipyramidal, or bipyramidal. Oh, uh. Yeah, right, I have to use any address, okay? Yeah. Did you guys get this as a, okay, it's a lot like CO two, cuz S and O are in the same family, so they, they form similar structures, okay? So, um, what are the bond angles between here and here? One eighty, same as my weight. In kilograms, okay, so then, what is the electron geometry? Linear, and the molecular?
Linear.
Linear. And what am I forgetting? Hy- hybridization if it's only two branches? SP. So electron geometry linear, molecular linear, hybridization is only SP, two branches, SP, okay? If it's trig planar, SP two, if it's tetra, SP three, those are the only three you have to know, okay? Um, and then the formal charge on the central atom on this one again is?
Zero.
Zero. Oh, how many sigma bonds?
Four.
Two, how many pi bonds?
Four.
Two. You, they have to add up to the total number of bonds, yeah. You cannot create or destroy bonds in a chemical, well, actually, you can, that's, that is chemistry, uh. It's okay, yeah. It's not okay, I'm just kidding, so.
It's, it's okay right now, as long as it's not in the test.
You don't seem like a prayer. Starts falling apart. You guys see me going into the trap with him crying? I'm kidding. Alright, uh, I gotta, since I didn't tell my wife we had a study session, I probably should get going here, um. I will be on remind if you have questions, so, um, just let me know, I'm, I'm probably gonna bed around ten, so. I, I'm on early to bed.
I was wondering if I went to bed.
She's not coming till next Thursday, so I miss her.
I feel, I feel confident.
Okay, so.
I know I'm at least.
These are, these are the three types we have you guys learn in Orange County.
At least a seventy percent, that's, I, I'm definitely getting it.
Okay, so forget the hybridization on those, but you do need to know, so think about this, it's got five. It's trigonal bipyramidal, okay, the electron geometry. It's, it, it's not gonna matter, it's long as there's. The atoms attached to it, it's gonna be that same electron geometry. Okay, the only thing you have to look for are the. So if it loses one, it loses C soft, loses two, loses C D, loses C G, okay? Um, for the, uh, octahedral and square planar, the octahedral, you're not gonna do anything besides it have six.